That's going to be made to the death. They have clear plastic right here so you can still read lips.
Oh, okay. Wow. That makes sense. We're getting close, señores. Getting close, sir. Hello?
Good afternoon, everyone.
I'll use your time as the official time. I have... Yes, ma'am.
Yes, please.
You're all, we'll hear you at your own voice level. The microphone or sending everything through Zoom, streaming. So anyone who wants to participate live will see it through Zoom. They want to basically talk to you guys directly. We're also streaming it on Facebook so people everywhere can watch it. If they have any questions at last time or go to public comment, just give it a few or maybe a minute or two.
Sure.
People on Zoom are seeing it basically in real time. The little Facebook is a little different. For everyone who has a major and wants to speak, they're trying to speak, they speak into the mic because they're a little... The nonsense of it.
Should we tilt them down?
Yeah. Tilt them down and try to speak into it. Just so it sounds good enough that you'll hear it enough if you go after the really great crowd.
Okay, well, we're talking through masks. What, the mask is here? Oh, the mask is here?
All right. Although I just created a normal, I don't think any public comments and go out on screen. If they're seeing me through that camera, they're trying to see the video right there. It's very small.
I thought it was up there.
You guys can see we have one or more people on. Any questions?
No, we're good. Thank you. So, we... All right. We're going to call this meeting to order. So if you'll stand with me, please, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You will be taking roll call, Miss Bell? Or...
Yes, yes, I will.
All right, very good.
Compton member Hernandez. Compton member Ramirez.
Here.
Oh, now away.
Here.
And that's for Tim Wood.
Here.
Compton member fifty-eight.
Here.
We have five zero, we have four.
Okay, so we're all present and I'd like to welcome everyone who's on Zoom and Facebook and whatever other media you're accessing this meeting. So at... Well, you... Oh, I'll read this paragraph. City Clerk, Government Code Section 5495. I'm sorry?
She's there.
Oh, okay, so if you'll read the paragraph, please.
Oh, go ahead. Let me see. Any person... Oh, Government Code Section 549425.3, the members of the City Council Successor Agency are entitled to receive a total of three hundred per month. Because of being elected to the City Council, they receive no other compensation for City as a member of the successor agency.
Thank you, Ms. Angie. So, we will be going out up to Item Four, which is public comment announcements and scheduled appearances. Will you do the favor, Ms. Angie?
Yes. Any person may directly address the City Council at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public that is within subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council Successor Agency. State law prohibits any member of the City Council Agency from commenting or acting on matters not on the agenda. Three minutes are allowed per person.
Thank you. So, anyone who would like to comment, I know it's going to... It has a bit of a lag. So we will be waiting two, three minutes for someone to... Who would like to comment on this item.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, this is Veronica Aguirre. I just wanted to bring to your attention that I think that one thing to consider is trying to seek some kind of funds for assistance of our small businesses in the community and also if we can seek some sort of assistance for undocumented in the community that also did not qualify for the stimulus but are having some problems and are unable to apply for any kind of other assistance through different state agencies because of their situation. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and that I hope the City Council will consider different options that may be able to assist some of these families that are needing, you know, food or assistance, maybe assistance with some of their bills. I understand, you know, that there... You know, like our water bill, PG&E, different things like that have given a grace period. But after the grace period is over, does that mean... That means that you're probably going to get a big bill that they're going to have to figure out how they're going to pay it. And after coming out of quarantine and not having any work, I fear that there's going to be a lot of people without, even after the quarantine. So I hope you guys could consider different options that, you know, and that can, you know, help some of the people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody else or someone else who would like to comment?
This is Alicia Ramirez with Assemblyman Rudy Salz's office.
Very good. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. I wanted to share that FEMA has a senior program and maybe I can talk to you guys about that a little bit more after this meeting. And this is basically a program that we... The city would coordinate with different restaurants and at the same time it's helping the restaurants and the seniors get free food, lunches, I should say. Here at the office, we continue to provide services. Our office, the building is closed, but we are taking calls and emails. We're still assisting a lot of our calls or, you know, unemployment-related issues. Anyone has any issues, please feel free to send them our way and let us know how we can work together. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Okay, very good.
Yasmin, is that you?
Yes.
Okay, give me one second to pull up your picture. All right, Yasmin, go ahead and identify yourself. Go.
Okay. Hola. I'm going to say it in Spanish first. I'm hola, me llamo Jasmine. Soy recrutante del censo y voy a estar hablando sobre el cuestionario del censo y oportunidades de empleo en el trabajo. Okay, so primero, el cuestionario es solo nueve preguntas por persona. Las personas son... Las preguntas consciente en preguntas sobre cuántas personas viven en su casa, si renta o paga su casa, tiene hipoteca, su número de teléfono, su nombre, su sexo, su fecha de nacimiento y si es hispano y finalmente su raza. Contestando estas preguntas ayudarán a su comunidad. El censo se hace cada diez años y es así como las comunidades reciben fondos para mejorar la comunidad. Por ejemplo, más salones para las escuelas, clínicas y componer las carreteras, etc. Todo es confidencial y todo, y todos tenemos que hacernos contar. ¿Cómo puede mandar el cuestionario? Hay tres formas. Una es mandando para atrás el formulario que les llegó en su correo. Dos, por internet, yendo a 2020census.gov y finalmente llamando y este número que contestan en español es 1-844-468-2020. Y ahorita mostró Tony una gráfica. Este es el porcentaje de las personas que han respondido al censo en Avenal. So ya casi llegamos a cincuenta por ciento y tenemos que ojalá llegar al cien por ciento. Ahorita está cuarenta y uno punto tres. So, si pudiéramos todos hacernos contar, estaría súper bien. Okay, ahora voy a hablar sobre el trabajo, oportunidades de trabajo trabajando para el censo. El trabajo consiste de ir a casas de personas que no han mandado el cuestionario para atrás y ustedes pueden trabajar en su comunidad o comunidades cercanas donde usted vive. Le pagan dieciocho dólares la hora o si quiere aplicar para ser supervisor y recibe esa posición, le pueden pagar veinte dólares la hora. Y también reembolsan las millas que maneje cuando está trabajando. Las horas son de veinte a cuarenta horas a la semana. Es muy flexible. Si tiene un trabajo ahorita, puede trabajar esos dos trabajos. El trabajo dura más o menos dos meses y este trabajo es del gobierno federal. Así es que tenemos que tomarle sus huellas y esto es gratis. Los únicos requisitos son que hable inglés o que hable inglés, español o inglés o otro idioma. Si es hombre, tiene que estar inscrito al selective service, que es servicios selectivos. Casi todos los hacen después de la high school. Y ser residente o ciudadano y tener transporte. Para aplicar, va a 2020census.gov adelante, jobs, G-O-B, G-O-B-S. Y si necesitan ayuda, me pueden llamar a mí. Mi número es 218-350-1476. Okay, so now I'm going to be saying the same thing but in English. So my name is Yasmin. I am a census recruiter and today I'll be talking about the importance of filling out the filling out and sending the census questionnaire, also about a job opportunity with the census. So the questionnaire has nine questions per person. The questions consist of how many people live in that address, in that address where you live, if you are renting or if you owned your home without a mortgage or with a mortgage payment, your phone number, your name, your sex, your birthday, if you're of Hispanic or Latino origin, and your race. Answering these questions helps your community very much. The census is only done every ten years and it has... And it is our community... Sorry. And it is how your community receives money to build more classrooms for our schools, clinics, road improvements, road improvements, etc. Everything is confidential and we need to make everyone count. The three ways that you could send your questionnaire are by sending in your questionnaire through mail with the prepaid envelope provided, going online to 2020census.gov or by calling 1-844-330-2020. So there's two different numbers for English and Spanish. Another, now talking about the job. The job consists of going to people's addresses who have not yet turned in their questionnaire. And you can work within your community or surrounding communities. You get paid eighteen dollars an hour or if you would like to be a supervisor and you get the position, it's twenty dollars an hour and they will also reimburse you for the miles that you drive when you're working. You could work between twenty to forty hours a week and these hours are flexible. How I mentioned, if you have two jobs, you could easily work both. We do also work weekends. Another thing is that this is a federal government job. Therefore, you do need to get your fingerprints taken and those are completely free. The job will last approximately two months and the only requirements are that you know how to speak English or English and Spanish or English in another language. And if you're a guy, you do need to have signed up for the selective services. Be a resident or citizen and have reliable transportation. My number once again is 218-350-1476 and to apply, you go to 2020census.gov/jobs. And that's my presentation. Thank you.
Yasmin, could you speak real quick about the response rate in Avenal?
Yes, the response rate in Avenal now is forty-one point three, which it's okay because it's moving up. I've been checking it since the beginning of the month. It was a lot lower. But we need to at least be fifty percent by now. They send it since March. It's been a month now. Most of us are at home. It just takes maybe ten minutes out of your day to fill it out. It's really, really simple. Those are... It's just questions that you already know, your kid's birthdays. You know if you own your house. It's just basic questions and it doesn't matter if you're legally here or if you're not. And everything is confidential.
What is your name again, please?
Yasmin.
Yasmin, okay. Torres Yasmin.
Yes.
Could you repeat your phone number or put it up there on the screen, please?
My phone number is 218-350-1476.
Is there any other questions for Ms. Yasmin?
There is no deadline at the moment. We are actually trying to recruit because a lot of people are... I don't know how to word it. They are not feeling safe with the virus. So a lot of people are not taking the job. So that leaves more opportunity for other people that do want to take the job.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, Yasmin, for all this information and we'll make sure we pass it around.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to comment? Any other calls, Tony?
Yasmin, there's a question if they'll still be doing door-to-door questionnaires?
Yes, that... We should have started in April, but now with the virus going on, we have word to start in June, but it's not official. And everything, we're trying to get ready for safety measures to be taken because we want people to answer the door. So right now we have it until June 1st. That's when we are planning on starting again.
Hey Yasmin, if anyone needs help, would they be able to call you?
Yes, that's why I provided my phone number. You guys could call me or if you guys want, I could also give you my email address. That would be better. Or you could text me as well.
Okay, very good. Anybody else with... For comment?
Thank you, Yasmin.
Well, he's not showing his picture. Vali?
Richard, Vali, are you on? Are you ready to present?
Yes, I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spoke to Melissa Whitten earlier today. I understand that you guys were going to receive some information from her attendance of the meeting, the Board of Supervisors meeting this past Tuesday, and then I would follow up.
Okay. Very good. So I guess you'll be sharing that information with us?
Yes.
Very good. So I guess that's it for him. So I guess that's it for him. Anybody else for comments, please? All right, so we're going to be proceeding with item number five, which is Consent Calendar. Item A, Consider Avon Police Department Declaring Patrol Vehicles Surplus Property.
Mayor, members of council, we, it is under consent calendar. The staff report reads, but I believe our Assistant Chief is part of this meeting. Erin, would you like to say a few words about the request?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The reason for the request this evening is we were contacted by the Sheriff's Department, and we currently have two old units that were originally Sheriff's Department vehicles. At some point, from the time when the city used to contract with the Sheriff's Department and we took over, we purchased those vehicles from the county for one dollar. The county would like to have those vehicles back because they're doing a historical project. They have a little museum set up in the Sheriff's Department, and they would like to restore one of the units to its former Sheriff's Department specifications, and they would like to use it for parades and community-oriented events. Both of the vehicles have not run in years. I've been here since 2015, and the Community Response Team vehicle has not run in that time, and then the second unit has not run since 2016. So neither of the, of the units are drivable, or I'm not sure if we could even get one of them running. I know the one that was running was having overheating issues. So my request is that, since they sold them to us for a dollar, and they're no longer even serviceable, that we designate them surplus equipment, and we allow them to be transferred over to the Kings County Sheriff's Department. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief?
Pardon?
I said that'll give us more space on the lot up there.
Yes, we actually have several of our old vehicles out there that are, that are just sitting, so it would be nice. I'm sure Scott and Rob would be glad to be rid of those vehicles from our city yard.
Okay. So seeing, hearing no questions, we need a motion for this item to approve the...
It is, it was consent calendar, but I did ask our Assistant Chief just to give a little information about it.
So we just... So we just need a motion and a second? Okay, so who moved first? Mr. Preciado, okay? So we have a first and second?
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Mrs. Woolley.
Ready for roll call?
Go ahead.
Councilman Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Preciado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wally?
Aye.
Mayor Obaye?
Aye.
Five zero, you got the cards, Chief.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night. All right, so we move on to item number six, which is New Business. Consider Small Business Loan Program. Ms. Mel?
I believe Fernando Zempion, our Community Development Director, is...
Yes, I'm, I'm on the line.
Hi.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, Melissa. So I think Veronica's comment was very timely. This is a, a program that Melissa and I have been considering for a few weeks now. It was just a matter of hashing out the details and presenting it to the council. As you know, a lot of our small businesses are struggling with the Shelter in Place Order, and we are hoping that council will consider our request to allocate twenty-five thousand dollars for a small business loan program. And what we're imagining is for it to be a two thousand, a three thousand dollar loan cap for each business until the money runs out. And it could be contingent on, you know, different things, or it could be, it could have no strings attached, just make it, you know, repayable based on, on certain interest rates, et cetera. I think those are things that we would have to hash out after the city council sets the, the money aside, which if, if, we're also requesting if we don't spend all of the money in this fiscal year, which runs out at the end of June, that we can carry it over to the next fiscal year. I, I think that this is something that, that would be extremely helpful for local businesses. I've gotten many calls from businesses who just want to open up so that they can generate enough revenue to pay their bills, and I think with the beginning of the month coming, and rents becoming due, and utility payments coming due, this is a very timely point in time to, to approve this if, if the council so wishes. So my recommendation, best recommendation is for the council to approve these funds for twenty-five thousand dollars, and we can work with council and our city attorney to hash out the details before we actually start loaning, loaning funds. And it, it could be that, you know, we run out of funds very quickly, and so I would also, you know, have the council consider, you know, refunding the program if, if we are in a position to do so, because this would be funded through the general fund unless the council decides to fund it from another source. That's all I have. Are there any questions, or Melissa, would you like to add anything?
Just as part of the motion, is that council would consider basically drawing down or, or providing approval to utilize the twenty-five thousand in our general fund and approve the resolution. I think it's a great program. I think it's needed, and Ms. Gary's comments were very timely.
Well, it was, it was a very arbitrary number that we thought might be small enough to not deter the council from making the commitment, but it could be any number that, that the council wishes. Councilmember, I, I'm having trouble hearing you, but I think I, I caught the gist of that, which was to increase the funding amount and make it not, non-repayable. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
He wants to study it.
Gotcha, okay.
Anybody else comments?
I think we should go ahead and approve this. I mean, we can also probably do something more in the future, but it seems like more of an emergency need that we need to get out there. They need it now, and we don't have time to wait.
Okay. Where is the money coming from, please?
Fernando, do you have those funds in your budget right now?
Yeah, I can move, I can move different funds around to, to accommodate that, yes.
So it wouldn't require a budget adjustment, so to speak? We wouldn't be drawing down? We had just, in fact, Fernando, he was looking at a higher amount. I'm being a little more conservative, thinking, okay, let's start, and if we need more, we can come back, but whatever comes with desire. I, I believe our business community needs help right now.
See, like the Mayor Protem said, this is an emergency response to the need right now, okay? Twenty-five thousand dollars may not seem like a lot, okay? But if we consider the amount of three thousand per, that covers eight different businesses to cover their loans, or whatever need they have currently as an emergency. We do not know what the consequences also financially is the city is going to have to bear in, in not-so-distant future, right? So we have to consider those things also. You know, this, the mayor from Fullerton wrote this letter indicating the effects that the change, these changes are going to have to the cities, and there's a lot of uncertainty, okay? Again, twenty-five thousand dollars may not seem like a lot, but it will cover for emergencies for eight businesses, okay? I do not know, because I haven't talked to the businesses, business owners or administrators themselves, but it will cover quite a few, so...
And if I may add as well, sorry to, to interrupt, Mayor, it's a maximum amount of three thousand, so it could be some businesses only need one thousand or two thousand, so that would allow us to make even more loans.
There you go, okay? So comments from Mr. Hernandez?
I do strongly believe that, you know, this twenty-five thousand dollars would be able to help some businesses, but of course, you know, the maximum reach that we can do is about, you know, like the mayor mentioned, is about eight businesses, and there's currently, you know, a lot of businesses that I personally know are struggling to pay their rent, utilities, payroll, and other expenses, and I, I believe that it should be increased to fifty thousand dollars minimum, and, you know, work on, work on a study to see what, what the actual needs of the businesses are.
See, we're, no, this is the thing, okay? Right, we know the need exists. How much of the need, we don't know, all right? So we, we're having this knee-jerk reaction to this moment, right? We're not saying no. If more money is needed, you know what? We'll come back and approve for the additional need, right? So, but it's the council's choice, right? Like Mr., I even forgot your name.
Santiago.
Santiago Fernando. Like he said, the miss, the business might only need a thousand dollars, all right? Three thousand is the maximum that we're proposing. So twenty-five, you know, they say I only need a thousand dollars for the rent, so that's twenty-five different businesses, right?
Would you mind clarifying the motion? Was it including a study as well?
Yes, I would like to amend the motion to fifty thousand dollars and start to, to make a study to see what the needs of our business community, community is about, and see after the state, after, you know, the program starts, and I would, you know, see what we'll make. At this time, you know, we just begin to do something for helping, helping the start.
Yeah, there's a first, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, there's a first and second. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, because it was really bad connection or something? I could not hear anything.
Mr. Preciado made the first motion, and it was second by Mr. Ramirez.
But what did the motion entail?
To approve the res, to approve the resolution that raise the amount of fifty thousand dollars and to have staff do a study after the program starts. Go ahead, start, please.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Preciado?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wally?
Aye.
Mayor Obaye?
Aye.
Okay, five zero.
That's resolution 202021. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fernando.
Thank you, Señor. Okay, so we move on to item 6B, information regarding the Kings County Boards of Supervisors meeting held on April 28th, 2020, Emergency Stay-at-Home Resolution.
I am going to keep my comments rather brief, in that our Kings County District Board of Supervisor, Mr. Valley, is actually on the phone, and I really want to thank him for participating today. Chief Stivers and I actually called into the meeting on Tuesday, and we were on the call from 9:00 AM till about 11:45. It took a while to get through the agenda. It was one of the last items, and there was a rather long, lengthy discussion regarding what the board's wishes were as far as a Shelter in Place Order. Was it still needed? And there seemed to be, to me, and I'm only speaking subjectively, is that it seemed that the board really would like to see the businesses open, understanding that businesses are really, really taking, i- it's a negative step for them, and they're having a hard time and struggling, just like our businesses are. The County Council, Lee Burdick, she was very clear in that the county could, because they have their own resolution Shelter in Place Order in, in place, that if they chose to terminate their order, the governor's order still is in place, and it basically becomes priority, and you can't circumvent that. So there still must be some type of plan in place, at least to look at opening businesses, but it has to be consistent with the governor. There was a great presentation by Mr. Dr. Teskey, and also really great presentation by a Dr. Yetka. He's the director of ER at Adventist Health, and they provided some great information on statistics and what's going on at the hospital. There were patients at Adventist that had been admitted with COVID, but most of them were not there because of that. They were there for other reasons. Kings County is, has been selected by the state to set up a testing center, and it should be open soon, so that, that was all encouraging news. And I think there was a, a bit of a conversation about how would a surge in this virus affect the medical, medical community in order to treat, or, you know, if there was a large surge, what would happen? And basically, it was Dr. Yetka that said that there, we would have to actually go out of the county. They would have to go out of the county to seek those resources. In fact, I, I'm going to hand this over to Supervisor Valley, because I would go down to my last comments on my staff report, and I actually read them to Richard today. They got through the conversation, and then it became very focused, understanding that even though county, they can terminate their Shelter in Place Order, they were still bound by the governor's they can terminate their shelter-in-place order, they were still bound by the governor's order in place. So the, the conversation switched or kind of turned. And the, the concluding remarks, I believe, are, are kind of sums up the second part of this discussion. So with that, I'm, I'm going to hand this over to our district supervisor, Richard Valley.
Okay, hopefully you can hear me pretty good, I'll do my best to speak up. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Avenal City Council. It's good to see you guys again. It's been a while, we've all been sheltering in and doing a lot of work from home. And so that's where I've been, as you know, I, I live in Quarkland. And so my home has become my office now more than ever. I've also been zooming or calling into our board meetings, myself to, you know, hopefully show a good example on the sheltering in and to be safe and not only safe for me, but to also not expose others and expose our staff there. So it's cramped quarters at the chambers, as you know. And so it's hard to stay six feet apart on that dais. So that being said, I also want to thank the community of Avenal and the residents of the city of Avenal for their great response to the Kings County Shelter and Order directives. And together over the last six or seven weeks, through our behavior, we've been able to work together to make sure that that hospital, as mentioned, the Hanford Adventist Health is not overwhelmed. And, and so with that, we were able to have a discussion. I believe it was a very balanced discussion this past Tuesday morning at the Board of Supervisors. Anyone who follows me or hears from me knows that I've been very much in the corner of the health aspect of this COVID crisis. And so I, I did a lot of work related to shelter in place. I was happy to make the motion a few weeks ago for that and happier to get support of the board to take the county in that direction. And all that being said, the main reasoning for the Kings County Shelter in Place was to help with these large gatherings that were still taking place. On weekends, I was getting a lot of calls, text messages, direct messages from all over the district, especially Avenal and Kettleman City, where folks, our community members, who are observing the shelter in place and doing their best and sacrificing, you know, their ability to go out and have fun, which we all want to do. And I can't wait to be able to do that myself. But they, they were, they were having issues with their neighbors having these large gatherings. The, the Tuesday that we had on the agenda to vote for our shelter in place, there was a large gathering here in my neighborhood. On Sunday morning, I saw a bounce house get brought in at seven in the morning. And I saw about thirty people in the front yard for a kid's birthday party all day and all through the evening. And so that, so I understood the frustration of that, right? I mean, and that's word to say because we want to see everyone having a good time. But at a time when we're being asked to do something, not only for ourselves, but to protect the most vulnerable. And, and I think we've heard the definition of the most vulnerable a thousand times by now. But, but so I understood the frustration from around the district. And, and so the Kings County Shelter in Place order was meant to show local support to Governor Newsom statewide Shelter in Place order. We stress that it was very important. So we sent a message to the residents of Kings County that the Board of Supervisors, the county takes that Shelter in Place directive seriously throughout the week. There were still some issues with people adhering to that. And so we brought back a resolution the following Tuesday, which we passed, that simply said that the Board of Supervisors was supportive of law enforcement's efforts. That includes the PDs around the county and the sheriffs and, and his hardworking men and women to support their efforts to enforce the Shelter in Place order, which we know the sheriff has been very vocal, as many of the other chiefs, that it was an educational mission, meaning no one was looking to go out and write citations or ticket people or find people. It was more responding to complaints to these large gatherings and showing up with the flyer that had the outlined and educated you on the governor's Shelter in Place directives and what it would mean if they'd have to come back, how you could possibly be fined, right? So we, we've all heard about that. So then you fast forward to this past Tuesday. We get the, the information from the chief emergency room director for Adventist. And he oversees, I believe it's Selman Reedley, I could be wrong, but it's three Adventist emergency rooms that he oversees. And so as Melissa mentioned, he gave a balanced presentation. I was very happy with that. He talked about the health and safety of the residents of Kings County. And, and he talked about the fact that if the, if the governor or the county, at that time, the county had a vote to do on whether or not they wanted to quote, "open up" the county. The emergency room chief said that, you know, Adventist stood ready to be able to withstand a surge if there was a surge. But he also spent a lot of time talking about the outbreak that we're seeing at Central Valley Meatpacking. And so as we see a lot of numbers over the last four or five days for Kings County positive cases, I believe that's already been publicly attributed to that outbreak at that meat park, meatpacking facility. And it's unfortunate, but the doctor said that if five percent of those employees got sick enough that they needed hospitalization at Hanford Adventist, then the hospital and the staff would be overwhelmed. So he said that to let the board know just how quickly that can change. That being said, we also were aware the day before through CSAC, we all got a copy of the governor's presentation, which he announced on Wednesday at his main press conference. More details into his four-phase reopening and that the fact that if the state's Shelter in Place directives would start changing in weeks versus months and that we needed to be prepared for that. So the board started looking forward now. And so we voted to remove our Kings County Shelter in Place order with the emphasis that we're still under the governor's statewide orders. So nothing changes in that part. And with the emphasis that there was still a separate resolution that stayed in place and it's still there, that the board voted on to support the law officers, enforcements of the governor's S I P. So that's still there. But now we need to move forward and prepare ourselves for the time when the governor says that we can start opening up in phases. The good thing about that, you got to really catch on to that when he says currently we are in phase one. When we move to phase two, not all of the state of California will move into phase two at the same time. And so I think that's good for us because if he's looking to the rural areas, which is where he's sending his testing resources, right? The, he doesn't have an unlimited amount of test kits, but the very few that he has, he's sending them to rural areas. And I'm hopeful that that sends a signal that if we get our testing, our tracing, that we get a grip on that, that we could be one of the first areas to quote, "open up" into phase two. So I'm happy to report that the state arrived today, right there in front of the admin building where the old courthouses currently sit there at the Kings County Government Complex. Those buildings have been empty for a while now that, now that the county has a new courtroom. And so that's where the testing site is being set up. So state got there today, they can be set up usually within ninety-six hours. And then I'm told that there will be a portal where people could go to and schedule an appointment to be tested. So there's going to be some priority testing and I'll get more information on what that means, whether it's law enforcement, firefighters being tested first. But, but I understand that, I understand that there's some, there's a priority list. And then once you get that out of the way, then the general public can come and, and be tested. So that's how I was able to be supportive of casting a vote to remove the Kings County Shelter in Place. And so you'll, you'll start to hear me more always stressing that we adhere to the safety guidelines that were being asked to do, but also do a lot of work and being proactive now so we could get the county opened up and get people back to work, but do so in a safe manner. And that we make sure that we also are focusing on the health of our economy and the health of those businesses, that we're going to need them to be there when we open up. So thank you, I'll pause there and I'll stay on if there's any questions. Thank you.
Any questions to Supervisor Ovayi? No, he said a lot.
Richard, would you mind, and maybe you did say something regarding the health officer, the direction he was given by the board for this next meeting, the information to bring back?
Yes, thank you, Melissa. So the board in the motion to remove the county's S I P, the second part of that motion was asking Dr. Teskey to work with businesses, but to come back and identify what businesses around the county can open up, especially when you start looking and learning more about phase two and phase three and starting to formulate a plan, so to be a working plan. And that's what I mentioned early, that I know personally, I'm going to be proactive with that plan. I'm looking around different plans in different languages around the United States and look forward to providing my input into that plan as well. But this Tuesday, you could also do the same thing, you could zoom into the Board of Supervisors, you could call in, you could listen and hear that update in real time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate those words, Councilman Prisciano. It, it, it was frustrating early on, like many of you who are in positions where people elected us to do a job and that's to lead. Early on, it was very frustrating, frustrating to just sit back and not be able to do anything. And that's not within the fabric of Kings County or their leadership. And so it took a minute, but the first opening that I know that I saw that I could jump in and fight back and get on offense, that's what I've been doing. And so just like many of you, and so I look forward to the day I can come back to the city of Avenal, be in your chambers in person and continue to work together. But always, everyone knows how to reach me. I'm accessible over the last twelve years, my cell phone is out there everywhere. We communicate a lot through Facebook, I'll continue to share information through the live videos. But always know that I'm still with you and I'm only a phone call away. Thank you.
Anybody else, comments, questions? Well, I too would like to thank you for all the work that you have done, Seon, and for keeping Avenal in mind as you take action in your meetings and your jobs. And the, like you said, for the last twelve years, you have, you have kept your word. You know, that you were going to work for Avenal, you know, as well as the other cities that you're in charge of. So I thank you for that and, you know, I just pray that you, you're given a lot more years as supervisor. So thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, so we thank you for your time.
Okay, good night.
Thank you, Richard.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, we go on to item six C. Information RE, RE twenty twenty, USBR Water Allocation Conservation Measures. Ms. Mall?
Yes, Mayor members of council, this is basically an informational item at this point. I just wanted to bring it to council's attention that our water allocation for this year, the first number is coming down, are at sixty-five percent of our historic use. And I actually explained the two-twenty allocation, two thousand nineteen, two thousand eighteen and seventeen, kind of how, how we have to deal with water each year. There was to be a survey, a snowpack survey today. I looked right before I traveled down to the theater to see if that percentage had changed and there was nothing posted, so hopefully there'll be something on the USBR site. With sixty-five percent of historic use for water year, twenty twenty, we're looking at one thousand six hundred and fifty-two acre feet, which is certainly not enough to get us through this year. Once we have the final percentage, according to the survey, we will look for direction from council on, on how council would like to proceed. I also pointed out in two thousand seventeen, and actually happened, I believe in two thousand fifteen, when we were going through a severe drought, which California was actually going through. And there were certain steps that were taken by the council at that time. And what we implemented was a phase three water conservation plan. And I have to say, our community, it took a very short while for our community to actually get into motion and realize that, you know, water was scarce. And that has been great for us, but as the water years have gotten a little better, water conservation continues and the way water works, you have to show use of water. So I appreciate all that our community does. We still have the rules and regulations in place, we're now under stage two. Water conservation, that's watering three times a week, it gives you the times. I did provide a copy of our phase two. And I'm hoping that we don't have to implement. There, there's a possibility that we may be able to obtain public health and safety water. It's just all part of the process each year. If it's a hundred percent year, that's pretty wonderful. I know we don't have to worry a lot about what our water allocation will be. What we have to worry about is how can we show more use of our water? It's our hundred percent water years that establish our historic use. So if we have a hundred percent water years, hopefully you'll use your thirty-five hundred acre feet and then that becomes your established historic use and then your water is cut from there. So I just wanted to bring this to council's attention. As soon as I find out what our allocation will be, what percentage it will be, I will let council know. Depending on, on the information, hopefully I will know more tomorrow. This item may be before council at the next meeting. I just wanted to give you just the status of what's going on and possibly look at a direction regarding how we should handle our water for this year if we don't have additional allocation available to us. Any questions?
Questions for? Well, you know, just like anything else, there's so much uncertainty. So we just need to take this thing into consideration as we move forward. And, well, wait, wait for the next, next update on the water allocation.
But we, conserving water, it is part of our CVP contract. It states in there, we must have a conservation plan in place and we must follow those measures. So conservation is going to be with us forever. But what I, any materials that I send, just about all material that I send to the Bureau of Reclamation, I remind them and we have proof in our safe at City Hall. Avenal, the community of Avenal, now the city, has been metered since the nineteen thirties. So this community has been living water conservation since its establishment. So we know what conservation is, it's our way of life. That's all, those are the comments I have. To be positive for a hundred percent year, okay?
What, what is the percentage that we're looking for?
I'm sorry?
What is the percentage that we're looking for? Yes, that's wishful, yes, but.
We would need somewhere between, I would say, 85%.
To be no change.
Right. That would still be with water conservation and we would still have to stay at least, uh, within, uh, stage two water guidelines, but at least that would help us get by without having to cut, cut too drastically.
So 85% would re- uh, require stage two. Okay, very good. Any questions? No. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So at this moment, uh, we will be going on to item seven, which is closed session. If there are any decisions, they will be announced after the, uh, closed session meeting.
May I make a comment, please?
Sure.
I would like to thank Umberto Ramirez and also Anthony Lopez. They have spent at least two days down at the theater, as I direct, setting up the meeting for us. And I want to commend them and thank them very much. They've done a great job. So I, I did want to acknowledge them. Thank you.
Awesome. Yes.
And we'll just quickly acknowledge Juan Carlos and Gallery for lending us their internet.
Okay. All I heard was an echo, echo. Oh, okay. Awesome.
Thank you, Gallery.
Okay.
I don't know how you won't do this, but it's pretty wonderful.
That's great.
Thanks to the gallery.
Yeah. Are they open? I mean, I've called so many times and no answer.
I've got.
It's entirely up to council. Uh, there, we didn't include, but certainly if council would like to make comments, that would be up to the mayor, where you would like that.
We will have closing comments after closed session. Okay?
After, okay.
Yes. So.
Okay, I believe we're going to the closed session chat room?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
We're gonna text you, I thought. Then I texted you.
Thank you.
For anybody that's still online. Got that? Alright, for anyone who's still online, we council has ended the meeting. No announcements. They've adjourned about five minutes ago. Thank you. We'll be ending the video conferencing now.